Good afternoon students. From our flagship corporate lecture series, Leadership and Entrepreneurship Aspiration Development Programme, The Asian Education Group once again brings to you an enterprising and internationally recognized achiever today. LEAD is an initiative of AEG which aims at inculcating and developing a leadership and the spirit of entrepreneurship among the young generation. Leadership and entrepreneurship development is the need of the art and a necessary tool for sustainable development, business growth, employment generation and empowerment. AEG LEAD invites industry professionals from the upper echelons and requests them to share their highly valued experiences which inspire and guide students towards innovative thinking, making them aware of the benefits of new ventures, self-development and attributes for being effective and efficient leaders. Few speakers invited under this programme include the late Shri Pranab Mukherjee, ex-president of India, Dr Kiran Beji, ex-IPS officer and the current Lieutenant Governor of Puducherry, Mr Sagar Dariyani, founder of Vow Momos, General Vikram Singh, the former chief of the army staff, Mr R.K Somani, managing director, HSI L Limited, Mr Philip Kotler, the father of modern marketing, Mr Richard Recky, former CEO, KPMG, R. Gopalakrishnan, former director, Tata Sons Limited, just to name a few. As Albert Einstein says and which so aptly describes our guest today, "Try not to become a man of success, rather become a man of value." On behalf of Asian Education Group, I welcome you all to this exclusive webinar, "The Real Padmane", in conversation with the very enterprising pathfinder and a trailblazer, Mr Arunachalam Muruganantam, a social entrepreneur and a Padmashri awardee. Mr. Arunachalam Muruganantam was born on the 7th of January 1961 and he is a social entrepreneur from Coimbatore in Tamil Nadu, India. He is the inventor of a low-cost sanitary pad making machine and is credited for innovating grassroots mechanisms for generating awareness about traditional unhygienic practices around menstruation in rural India. His many machines which can manufacture sanitary pads for less than a third of the cost of commercial pads have been installed in 23 of the 29 states of India. He is currently planning to expand the production of these machines to 106 nations. His low-cost machines that make sanitary pads have earned him international recognition. A Muruganantam story has been told on the big screen as "Padmane". His life is a haze of interviews to newspapers, TV channels and radio stations. His phone doesn't stop ringing and his wife sees him only during meal times. To the world, he is a social entrepreneur, padmane or the menstrual man. The man who wore a sanitary napkin, the low-cost sanitary napkin machine that he created is changing the lives of thousands of women across the world. But at his home in Coimbatore, he is a busy father whose bonding time with his daughter is during his work tours. He also takes her along since he is rarely home. He has gained international recognition but the man is matter of fact about his celebrity status. "My work remains the same", he says, seated in the living room of his rented home. "Tomorrow, I will walk into a remote village with my machine and no one will recognize me", he says. Nothing has changed or will change. But the cause that he opposed to take sanitary pads to every nook and corner of India is gradually gaining momentum. In another 30 years, Muruganantam is sure to get 100% reach. The movie "Period: End of Sentence" won the Academy Award for the best documentary for the year 2018. The 2018 Hindi film "Padmane" was made on his invention starring Akshay Kumar as him. In 2014, he was included in the Times magazine's list of 100 most influential people in the world. In 2016, he was awarded the Padmashri by the government of India. Mr. Arunachalam Muruganantam, we welcome you to this platform where we await eagerly to hear about your tremendous journey catapulting you to international recognition. I hand over the session to you, sir.
So, good afternoon everyone. So, madam, introduce much. So, my name is Arunachalam Muruganantam. Actually, my father's name is Arunachalam. Because of the western style, usually Muruganantam, Arunachalam is Indian style but because of Issa and various formalities, I become Arunachalam Muruganantam. So, what make me to speak on webinars, you know, the Padmashri award, so much award, so what I did? So, I am not a sports person, I am not, you know, a film actor. So, what makes, you know? The important secret is, I tried to help my wife or everything I started from my wife, now it is gone global. So, what I want to say to the gentleman, anything you want to be famous personalities, I want, you want to be a rich or something, please start from your wife, something doing good. So, anybody you want to change the world, first you change your family, then change your street, then your village, then come to change the world. So, all I started from a small village in down south in Tamil Nadu, in Coimbatore city, almost 30 kilometers away from the city. My father is a handloom weaver and my mother is a housemaker. Suddenly, my father died in a road accident. So, then my mother took care of the family. So, she joined in a nearby farm and he earns around 10, 15 rupees per day. So, suddenly he become a caretaker of the family because of sudden absence of my father. So, out of 10 or 15 rupees, what she is earning with that, she is trying to make me as a lawyer. So, what you are going to be in future. And I am having two younger sister, one sister into doctor, another sister into police officer. Why? Because she used to see many movies in a during takis, not even a proper building. Even many younger generation, you don't know the term called during takis. It is attached, so the films. Where in screens, you know, Vaishnava's and Hamma Malice do lot of miracles. So, by seeing the film, my mother also want to do the same, what the hero is doing in a screen, in a real life. So, being a small adolescent boy, I understood it is only possible by Hamma Malice and Vaishnava's in screen, not by poor mother. To support my mother, I decide one day under the neem tree, from tomorrow, I am not going to school. That is a remarkable day in my life, so don't mistake in me. Because not, I am aware, you know, I don't, I am not interested on education, something. Just I want to help my mother. In a monetary aspect, I want to work. So, being adolescent boy, I thought somebody will give you job, something. Then I stopped schooling, going to school, then I become a workshop helper. Then later I become a welder, learning welding and all. Then the moment you are having age around 20, 25, you are having a small business, you know, what is next? Even though seeing many men they are suffering, it is very difficult, it is very serious to manage, knowing everything, I also did the same mistake. One day I got married. That is arranged marriage. So, being newly married guy, what is an important job, you know? Just impress your new wife. So, that's what I am giving a five rupees plastic bandit or 10 rupees glass bangle. Not giving to date, I ask to gift trap. Then there is a color ribbon, then I say my wife's name is Santhi. Close your eyes, Santhi, turn left, turn right. This way, I used to give value for my small gift. This is value addition. So, like that my life gone, one day I saw my wife is carrying something behind her. The purpose is not, it is hiding. She don't want to show it to me. Then I thought she is playing with me. I ran behind her. I saw a nasty rag cloth with blood stain. I don't even use the cloth to clean my two-wheeler. Then understand she is adapting an unhygienic method on her period days. Oh, now I am coming to the point. Even though I talked this subject for hundreds of dias, thousands of webinars, the moment you come to that main core of the topic, maybe many audience, you get some, you know, some irregime. "My God, what is this talking?" Because the subject what I am going to handling for last two decades or what I am handling on public dias, it is a taboo for centuries. I don't know for how many centuries, from 5 B.C. or something. So, because this is that subject, a daughter never talk to mother, a wife never talk to husband. So, friends, they don't talk each other. It is the biggest taboo. Menstruation is the biggest taboo. So, such a subject, I started talking dialogue with my newly married wife, that too 25 years ago. So, she get frustrated. I simply ask, "Why you are adapting this method?" There is some product. Even I don't know the term called sanitary pad. Then she replies clapping on my cheek, you know, what, you know, she replied. "I also know that product but myself, other women at our family start using. Then we have to cut our family milk budget." Then really I get shocked, what is the connection between using a sanitary pad and not buying milk per family? Then I understood it is a matter of affordability, the cost factor. That's what I decide on a particular day, why not offer a sanitary pad packet as a gift to my new wife? So, I am not lying in front of students or in front of faculties because many people, they got a small accolade, they become small awardee. They will say in public, you know, from my childhood, I want to do something for society. I want to became a second mother. I don't want to lie. On a particular day, after seeing my wife using a rag cloth, I am having an only idea, why not offer a sanitary pad packet as a gift to my new wife? Just impress her. That is true. Then I decide, but where can I go? I have to go to a medical shop. In my village, nobody is selling the sanitary pads. Then I took my cycle, I ride around 14 kilometers, I end up in a medical store. Then the shopkeeper asking what brand you want, who knows brand and all. I just point out a packet inside the showcase. What he did, he took the sanitary pad packet, he never hand out me like other products. He placed on a old newspaper, he wrapped, he looks left and right. He hand out me like a smuggled product. That makes me really funny, why he is doing like this? I become curious also, so what is inside? Then I took the packet to my home, I opened the packet. Very first time I am taking a pad, I am touching a sanitary pad. I took out that pad, an 8-inch length white color substance like a bandage. Note the point. I told, I am a son of a handloom weaver. That is why I am having rapport, connection or knowledge with cotton yarn and all. Now I am taking a sanitary pad, a white color substance is cotton. Maybe 10 gram cotton inside the pad, they wrapped with some cloth. 10 gram cotton raw material cost in 1998 is 10 paisa. But I bought the product for 10 rupees a pad. That's what being uneducated, illiterate, I got an idea, why not try to make affordable pad for my wife? That is it. You know the point, I am having a domain knowledge on cotton. Then I am having a domain knowledge on engineering. That is why I am deciding, why not to try sanitary pad? Note the points. Because now many younger generation, without adequately their domain knowledge, they are trying to bend the sky. They are trying to change the world with other person knowledge. Now outsourcing is only possible to Mughai Sambhani or Ratantata somebody but being a new entrant in entrepreneurship or in life, who will obey you? The moment you have domain knowledge or billions of money in Akkun, then only the higher your person, they will obey you. Please note the point. Now, then I, now I decide, why not try to affordable pad? Then I went to a textile mill, you know, in Coimbatore, there are in and out hundreds of textile mills. I bought a cotton whip which is used in beauty ball and to wipe your face. Then I took my home, I cut it into rectangle, I wrapped with the viscose cloth used in handcuffs and collars to make stiff. In two days, I made a similar napkin what I bought from the shop. Now the problem is, something I am doing, a research on engineering field, very well I can do in my small shop. Now I entered into women personalized gene. I need a woman volunteer to check my pads. Where can I go? The only available source is my wife, she is a victim. Then I hand out the napkin to my wife. Then after 15 days, I got a nasty feedback. She told on a particular day, the napkin is useless, it is waste. She is going back to rag cloth using method. See, see, give a nasty result, it is, it is a failure. That makes me, Muruga is speaking on a webinar today for AEG College. Because on a particular day while I am handling the napkin, Santhi says the napkin is good. The Muruganantam characters know that, there is no film of padment. Because she rejected, she give a very, you know, the feedback like a failure, that makes me to think because a simple cotton matter make me fail. I am working with irons. So, what is that? So, I am continuously researching, researching with various milk cotton. I, again, I can connect it with my younger sisters. But, you know, being a illiterate women like my wife and sisters, they become frustrated because this is the first time a man is talking to a woman about women personalized gene, about menstruation. Even being a wife and sisters, they are really frustrated, they want me. You are going on talking about this and we will tell to my mother. Then they thought I dropped the research, I never dropped. I tried to get help from medical college girls. There is also problem, even the future doctor girls, they are having hesitation. That is why it makes me, it forced me to use sanitary pad on my underwear. I can wear a sanitary pad but where can I go for uterus? I made an artificial uterus in a rubber bladder. I filled animal blood in it. I tied on my hip. While I am walking and cycling, I made a small doses of breast. A doses of blood will go to the sanitary pad which I am wearing. You just imagine, the whole story never happened in Las Vegas or in New York or London. It is happened in a small orthodox village in down south of Tamil Nadu. That is why I faced a lot of problems because while I am testing, there is a blood stain on my dhoti, it is a false smell because there are so many stories happen around me. First, they told me to my wife, I am having an, I am roaming behind medical college girls. Then she left. She sent a divorce notice for me, that is my first account I got. Then even after using sanitary pad myself for three to four weeks, I think around 25, 26 days, I feel it is unnatural. But I found one secret after using wet sanitary pad in my underwear. The strongest creature created by God in the world, not a lion, not an elephant, not a tiger, the woman. So, any man you are having a doubt, please use wet sanitary pad in underwear. Send us the feedback to muruganantam underscore in a diako dot com. Even today, I am getting feedback, I am Dennis from Denmark, Muru. I got a heavier cold on fourth day, severe fever. Yes, the men atom is weaker than women, likely they forget we are dominating. Now I am coming to the point. So, even after using sanitary pad 28 days, I am not finding because why it has become so difficult, the sanitary pad as a women personalized gene domain is monopolized by Europe companies and American companies like BNG, JNG. So, no one know what is it. It is a Darwin's code. An uneducated person, you know, accidentally entering the domain is trying to decode it. That is why it has become a difficult, it is running, months are running, years are running. Even I am unable to decode the material what they are using. Then after two years, you know, what I did finally, you know, I tried to collect used napkin from the women. Why? Because, because supplying napkin to women and girls, they are trying to get the feedback orally. It is difficult, why not collect a used pad? That pads will speak to me. That is why I collect the first batch of sanitary pad used by the medical college girls. I took like a treasure in my mufat. I spread all in my small home, backyard of my home. One fine Saturday evening, I left for whole night because, you know, 10 to the girls use napkin, what the false smell it will create. Then I waited for whole night, the false smell will go. On Sunday morning, I wrapped my nose with the handkerchief like how that pandemic, you know, everybody wearing that mask. Then I am seriously researching what happened to my napkin. I had to supply company napkin also to check what is the difference between my napkin after using and company napkin. I never realized my mother is coming back. She thought son is cleaning chicken for Sunday. The moment come and saw the substance on the stable, she started crying like anything. She told the same, somebody did on my Sunday, become totally mad. She left instantly, taking all her belongings, then is staying in my sister's home. The mother, the moment mother left, the whole village come out a story. I am, my, I am, my body entered a bad spirit. That's why I become a vampire in the evening, I am drinking girl's blood. That's why the cough panjaiti village, they want to chase out my fam, myself or they want to put upside down in a holy tree to take out the bad spirit from my body. If they will do, then they will kill me. Then I ran out from the village. Now I understood the secret of the raw material. But even after knowing the material, you need a multimillion dollar plant to process the material. But I never bother about that. I spent another four and a half years on my mechanical domain. I made small, small machines. From the day one, after eight and a half years, I succeed to apply the raw material on that same raw material used by Johnson and the big companies on my small machine, I succeed to make napkin. Then I same napkin, I supplied to the second or third batch of medical college girls. One day I got the feedback from the girl. That day, you know, Indian girls started driving gearless scooters, the scooty. Then I met a girl on the street, then I asked, beautiful scooter and my napkin. They used to call me as brother, "Bhaiya, I forget your pad now." See, the feedback, a girl on a period using my pad, but she forget. She is on period, such a comfort my napkin is giving. Oh my God, I succeed, this is a Yuroga day for me. It is a Yuroga day for me. Now, I am having a innovation, world first innovation. So far, the sanitary pad making is macro and centralized model of doing business by Americans and Europeans. Very first time, a village boy from down south, he create a small equipment to make world-class pad at your home, that too with the uneducated women. But who knows? So, somebody should devolve at the machine, then I send it to the nearest IIT, you know, for me is IIT Madras. Then I met very first time, the English which I am speaking from 2009 December. Earlier, I spoke only Tamil, my vernacular language, even I don't know Hindi, anything. So, I sent my machine to IIT for evaluation. Very first time, I am seeing man with French cut, you know, that mustache and beard are joined. They never wear a full pant, off pant, it's a bermudas, Nike shoes. They are speaking English with whole body. Hey, oi, I never bother. Because whatever they are asking, what I did, the machine with my domain now, if they ask what is the material you use is EN36. Why the blade angle is 15 degree? I can explain, explain, explain. Because it is not happened out of magic, it is not on probability. This is hard work on a knowledge platform. That's why they agree, it is an innovation. I got an IPR rights later. But only they are having doubt, why this man spent his whole life, eight and a half years, after sacrificing his family and all, what is going to do with this small equipment? Their doubt is, in what way I am going to apply this small machine again, big multinational corporation? So, many time, being a younger generation, if you are having a difference of your opinion with your seniors, with your faculties, your girlfriend or father, mother, don't debate with them. Show the practical success, then the world will shut their mouth. That's why I sent my first machine from Tamil Nadu to Madhubini in Bihar. It is a miracle happen, it is a one-man army. I set up the machine there, like if you see the Padmane movie, it is narrated same. Then I will give the training to the village women, they make sanitary pad. Then no one know, only I know that miracles happen. Then I come back to Coimbatore, I make another machine. So, by that, I worked in under a village, I got a data, no one will agree with me. I got a data, not even 10% women are using sanitary pad in 2005. Then suddenly I become a stage speaker, public speaker. I spoke in Delhi, very first time in 2006, early 2006, in front of top brass, officials, ministers. I spoke openly, see, not even 10% women are using sanitary pad. Only 10% women are using sanitary pad, 90%. Then nobody will agree with me because even if I am telling you, if you seeing advertisement every 10 minutes in all channels, they are cutting the napkin into pouring blue color water, red color water out of it. You are having a mindset, you thought in all women in India are using. But in my knowledge, after working with deep packets of India, I realized, my God, Indian women are not using pads. Then some minister, they become serious. Then they called EC Nielsen, is the biggest, you know, the survey company. Then they took 18 months. They come out a data, Muruga told 10% women only using. They told 88% women are not using sanitary pad. 88% women in India are not using sanitary pad in 2006. Note the point, from 1947 to 2006, in spite of presence of multinational companies and all department in government, the penetration is not even 12%. So, that's why the, the small machine which I made, a macro and micro setup, now I made this as a women-to-women model, for the one, by the one, of the one model. The woman is making sanitary pad, she is going to other women. She is talking one-to-one, how important that women personalized gene, what the problem if you create, if you not using. Like that, we are able to convert a woman from unhygienic to hygiene method. That is why the biggest corporation or government, what they are unable to do, the small, the business method, later, the world is given the name. Oh, Muruga is social entrepreneur, the innovation, everything I did first. Then I got a name second because of English, you know, social entrepreneur, everything. Because I, I gave the napkin to my wife and, you know, my sisters in my village, in my city. Then I started giving that technology to across India, to all my sisters. So, that's why they called as a social entrepreneur. Then resolve, you need a mindset first of all to conceive this. Because if you study something, if you breed in the small campus, then you've come with a fixed mindset, you cannot see, you even cannot image to do something different. Because by studying somewhere, if you are trying to create something, it is a copy. It is not an innovative or creative. Creative is something out of books, out of education. It is, it is coming from the sky or something. If you are having a spiritual belief, you something, you can call it as a given by God. So, that's what, more than connecting with your, you know, the books or, you know, department, everything, please try to connect with nature much time than what you are spending in library. Don't mistake in me. You study in library, you become a bookworm, I never bother. You got India first, you know, college first, all first inspired. I know you can come out with the gold medal with ignorance. If you connect with nature, if you connect with society, if you open your eyes 100%, you hear 100%, so that makes your 100% personality to think out of box. That is what even the whole India, the whole world offered me. I know the model which I am doing is going to create a change in society. It is become proven, not only proven, why? Because even after two decade, I am going, I am speaking, speaking, it is made, biography is made on film. So, it is not like one leg, he succeed, then he become a celebrity, then vanish to the tinder, not like that. Still, I am alive. I am supplying machine to Andaman and Nikubur Island, somewhere in Kenya. This is why I am a live current. You can also be a live current if you are able to think creative. Mainly, if you are able to handle the problem, the society by becoming a solution provider. So, that's what ultimately tried to become a solution provider. That's what, after inventing the machine, my goal I set as, not banking as a big company, billion dollar, everything. I am not against, you know, money or this and all. My philosophy is, everything should come as a by-product. Don't focus on money, Audi, BMW, Ferrari, as a, you know, prime. It should be a by-product, something you are trying to achieve. You see, you see my, my, you know, vision, creating million rural employment and converting India into 100% menstrual hygiene awareness country. So, while I am doing, I am not a philanthropist or mother Teresa. I am an entrepreneur, name called JSC Industries. I am selling my machine for a need-based profit margin. So, like that, while I am creating a million job for the poor man, what is wrong? I am having an Audica. So, this way, try to do something, a constructive, a creative change and a meaning to your life, then everything it become a by-product. The four-bedroom apartment, the Audica, the servant, everything is become my by-product. So, like that, make your life as a by-product and give a meaning in your life. So, that's what, so the prime aim of this Muruga's life, the meaning of my life is creating a million job for poor man and making us 100% sanitary napkin usage country, the India. Now it has become world, that is a globe. So, this word, so use your education to address a problem, be a solution provider. Don't use your education, simply survive in your life. Thank you very much.
So remarkably amazing story, sir, and so real. But what is actually baffling, sir, here? But your invention came at a great personal loss wherein you nearly lost your family, money and place in the society. What kept you still going? Did you ever think of just giving it all up?
It's a very, really good question. So, usually like they will ask Muruga, the wife left, the mother left, why you are not give up? So, again and again, I am stressing on the, the domain knowledge because many younger generation, now they are neglecting the knowledge. Something they are trying to do with the magic wand or with the father's, you know, influence, a mother influence, other faculty or a good college. If you join in a good college, they will create the future. Nobody will bother about your future, you have to create your own future. So, that's what I am saying, so here, one, one person is building his future in a good manner, in a proper way. Another is failed. This, in a simple one word is the answer, the failure person is discouraged, the succeed one is encouraged. So the this way, every individual life, the the amount of, you know, that encouragement and discouragement is a factor of success and failure. Then how, what is the secret, keep yourself continuously an encouraged person, inspire the whole world coming to you, yes. Though if something you are trying to do a different, the whole world, you know, the importance that they will come and discourage you. Nobody will come and encourage you. Even today, uh, uh, younger generation who is hearing that webinar. Is trying to create a, you know, not fearless, wheelless car, even the faculty is mother, father, everybody love, oh my god, you are thinking. My, oh, Bagalavya, but it's a good idea, a wheelless car, the whole world become a man. After you know that, uh, internal combustion engine and fossil fuel, they are going for E V, K V. What is that electric vehicle, nothing more than, you know, for combustion engine. So really you want a wheelless car, something a power from source of energy, from gravitational force or, you know, some solar force. That is called innovation, not the stupid E V. So like that, if you are doing something innovative, and ninety-nine point nine or hundred and five percent discretion only will come. So like that, I am also having an encouragement and discouragement mode in my personality or body. So anybody trying to come and trying to discourage me, I am also discouraged, you know, like how? Like a sneeze, I will hold discouragement like a sneeze, but I will hold encouragement like a breath. Simple secret I am giving, hold your hope like a breath. Leave your discretion like a sneeze, that's it.
Very beautifully said, sir. So the next question coming to you is, throughout your life journey till today, which is that moment which you cherish the most?
What's important, turning up for something is relevant, but, um, there are a lot, but only one important now. I actually, if you check with the B B C C, everywhere I told the same. I set up, I started setting up the machine in a remote part of India, because many people are thinking. Uh, twenty super metros or hundred metros are, you know, building India, it is not true. Six hundred thousand villages are building India, not that hundred cities are twenty super metros. Like that, I used to work in, no, no, Rajangov, somewhere in, um, in Vijaywada. And even you, even I tell Tegri, so like like that, I am started working in deep pockets of India. One point of time, I am working in Uttarakhand in Tegri in a hilly village with Gujas. So it's a hilltop, I am struggling for months to set up a sanitary pad packet for that tribal woman. Then I succeed, you know, that I, then later I am connected and connected with the particular group, then I understood. Nobody ever gone to school for centuries, I don't know for how many centuries, they are depending with cattle talk, you know, buffalos and all. Such a community, I set up a machine, then I came back to Coimbatore. After a year, I got a call from that woman in a small Nokia cellphone. Byya, while you are staying at my home, you saw a girl, that girl started going to school. Oh my god, what Negru failed, Gandhi failed, the whole economical system is failed, the simple machine is succeed. A girl started going to school, that is noble for me, that's the happiest moment, even I never forget.
So you cherish that the most, and what about the most difficult incident in your life?
Every day, so even today, talking on the webinar, handling this is very difficult, because you know, they will, even while the hearing. Somebody will think, what is it, what he did, he is saying about some sanitary, because the subject what I am talking, men totally unaware. Luckily on the dias, I saw a woman, oh my god, I save, suppose you are also man, what is my, you just think. Because you are, you are able to grasp completely what I am talking, you are giving, the same the man, you know. Even today, it is a gloomy, what I am talking is a gloomy, I am something talking about astronomy, like astrology or spiritual. So I'm, I'm sorry to matching all with menstruation, it is a gloomy area what I am talking, that's why struggling even today. Is a, every morning is day one for me, only on webinars and parties, I am a celebrity, that's all.
You are a celebrity, so you must have watched this movie Padman. How closely has this movie depicted your real-life struggles and experiences?
It is about mass communication, uh, I hesitated, so I am interested to make as a Hollywood movie. Because I want to make this message to give all over the world. Then you know, usually the Hollywood movies will take seven to eight years to make into reality. Then luckily, um, the beautiful woman again, uh, Tinkil has played a very important role, she chased me for one and a half years. To get congrats for me, then I agreed, because something you are talking on webinars, on digital platform for a bunch of bunch of people. One Bollywood movie come with an Hindi language, definitely it will, it will create, going to create a great impact. Here the matter is, not using sanitary pad, not using, using sanitary pad, not using, not using sanitary pad or a. Uh, price of the pad, it is matter of creating an awareness on menstrualizing practice. I am very clear, even today, I am not talking about giving a free pad, one repay less pad, no. First to create awareness on menstrual hygiene is important, to create that, I believe. That Bollywood maybe is a pivotal role, that's why I agree, it's a beautiful moment, working with Balki. And the whole team like, you know, Akshay Kumar and everybody, so everybody get involved, that's why we got the best film award on the particular year for that movie.
So our students are very excitedly waiting in the wings to put their questions across to you.
Oh my god, I thought it's their question you are asking.
Oh, they are very excited, all of them, so, but then, uh, we've got about two or three for you. Uh, this is Aditi Khanka, Aditi, can you come across with your question, please?
Afternoon, sir. There as you all know that you are the ultimate Padman of India and we all are very much aware about your inspiring story. But, uh, my question is, what is the next plan or mission you are working on now, what is the next plan?
Aditi asking a beautiful question, because you know, the moment, so I am not a film actor, I did a project, uh, you know. Uh, Dada, then it run for twenty-five weeks, Murga, so what is next, no. So my life, even my lifetime will not sufficient to address this single issue only in India. Then the globe, by then, somebody, they come out the truth, there is women in Mars too. So my lifetime will not sufficient, why I am saying, don't dilute yourself, the ones you get succeed. While he scored something a big, you know, something runs or you know, catches, if you go and ask Sachin, what is the next game? Definitely Sachin will laugh, the same you are asking with me, this is my life. Like that, every younger generation, you have to took, give a life to your meaning, it is not like, you know, something you did the Rangoli, what is next, no. This is called life, because hundred and forty crores, there are so many, what you did now from six percent. It a twelve percent to, we achieved thirty-four percent, obviously, we changed. That impact what we created from two thousand six to two thousand twenty in fourteen years. The twelve percent of using sanitary pad penetration became thirty-four percent officially. So what they did from nineteen forty-seven to two thousand six is twelve percent, from two thousand six to two thousand twenty in fourteen years, it become three-fold. So we are, I told already earlier, I am making hundred percent, so that's why I said, Aditi said, my lifetime not sufficient. And definitely if you are having a mission or you are becoming a solution provider, you should not dilute before what your vision you are having. Don't dilute your vision, thank you very much.
So the next question is, what was the reaction of your family, friends and people around you? After being recognized as the real Padman of India?
The same as I said, you know, the social entrepreneurship, because many of my family members, my relatives, everybody thought. Uh, he got Bhadmasri, he got the award, they said, every time they, they are trying to see in the conversion of row of homes. A row of cars, he bought a ship, he bought a Mumbai Bangala, like that, nothing is happening, he is wearing the same Modi coat. A same shirt, a same Bolero Jeep, they, they don't understand what I am doing. Because the whole world is trained only to show off the success, you know, one success, one house. The other success in Jhughu Beach, one other apartment, in another apartment, so not like that, so I am here. I am achieving, my achievements depend on converting the percentage of women from six percent to hundred percent. No one except people like you, that is a problem facing even from my family, you know, most other social, uh, people actually. That's a difficult term, social entrepreneur, social entrepreneur also.
Yes, sounds like music to our ears, sir, we wish we had more Mr. Arunachalanshi here taking up different issues. So the next question coming to you, sir, is, what would you suggest should be undertaken regarding the upbringing of children? To eliminate the social stigmas that are a major part of the Indian society?
You are talking about menstruation or other social stigmas, so, so much, or I can address only the menstrual hygiene area?
Okay, alright, so which personality do you look up to the most from the social change makers of the modern world?
That's what I told, you know, completely the out-of, out-of-box person are, very mainly. The difference between educated and educated, very simply I can tell. Being an uneducated person, we don't have a fear on our future, we never bother about, you know, what we are going to happen in next year. Uh, you know, in two thousand twenty-four, but the same, while you are getting graduation, even with gold medal in a reputed institute. If you come out with graduation, you have a fear on your future, so with that fear, you cannot, you nothing do it for you, then how you are going to do for society? That what I am saying, so act like a fearless man, you know, the fear is the biggest stigma for the younger generation. To do something unsocial, I, I'm, again, I am saying, don't, I am not asking to all the younger to come for philanthropy. Like a social entrepreneur, you can do something for profit, the ultimate change is a social change. Even to do that, many people, they will afraid because of the afraid on their future. I said, no need to afraid on your future, nothing is going to happen, see, Murga became a Padman, then why not you, so come on.
So you've been saying that you've done nothing, so that, I mean, you should get recognized or get awards or get accolades. How did you feel when you received the Padmasri, what was your feeling?
So whenever I am receiving the award, so nothing, I got a momentum in my mind, because every award is given to me, is given to the cause. So every time even you are calling for the webinar, so you are not calling Murga to the webinar, you are calling the cause which I am addressing. The women personalizing you are calling, so even today I am talking not to become fame, the, every minute I am speaking. The menstrual hygiene awareness only spread, 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 despite every award, the society is given across world. Including the Oscar for the documentary which we won, it is to the cause which you are addressing. So this is the mindset should have all the people, the, the award is not given to you, it is given to the cause. You draw a beautiful art, you did a beautiful innovation, you did a beautiful invention, for that, not for you. So from, from the day one, I know, it is not nothing, even everything what I am having, it is not for Murga. To the cause which I am addressing.
I think, I think that is so wonderfully said, sir, I wish everybody could realize that. I mean, this is, this is really something momentous for us to hear something coming from such a great man like you, who has taken up such a huge cause. So we have another student here, sir, Ansh Kulshreshda.
What's that?
Ansh, can you please put across your question?
Good afternoon, sir, my name is Ansh, first of all, I feel very honored that I got a chance to question a man like you. I want to ask that what were the legal challenges you faced in your wonderful journey that has made the whole nation proud?
There are so much. You know, while I am trying to get a patent, because you know, I told, I am already, I am started rubbing shoulder with, uh, world big. Multinational, so that why I am not talking much on the struggles or the problem which I face. So nowadays, younger generation coming forward to do something creative, so by that I am talking, this is the struggle I faced. One day I, I chased by lion, another day I bitten by tiger, so it happens, so you can come out. So because the ultimate goal is creating something unique. And the purpose is not create something on lab and branding that and making billions. Here I am different, I am going to innovate this, this is what I am going to create a social change. This word, the ultimate aim, if you have in your mind is good, you are automatically, you know, supported by the almighty. Or you are not agree with almighty, by the universal law, the complete world goodness started helping you. You can come out, whatever the problem you have, you will win finally, so take it granted.
Sir, how do you perceive the recent Sabrimala judgment of the Honorable Supreme Court of India? Wherein the court has discarded the years-long practice of banning the entry of women to this temple when in menstruation?
Again, I told, it is for the cause, slowly, um, because I told, it is not happened in, um. Uh, last century or something, I, I wrote an article on, even the labor, you know, slaves are abundant by sixteenth century. You know, but I don't know when it started stalking, it took longer time even to debate. Now, we started to debate, so many changes you are going to expect, this is a step, but so many change, I am expecting menstruation leave. Paid leave, I am struggling with, uh, uh, you know, state and federal governments of various governments across world. It's talked in eighteenth and nineteenth century, but suddenly dropped, I am struggling now to even to get leave. Paid leave, so you are talking about social success, I am talking about, you know, financing success also around menstruation. But it's a beautiful steps, you know, so many we have to come out, there are a lot.
Men still carry a negative perception about periods, even while buying pads for their sister, mother, wife, daughter. They get them wrapped up in newspaper from the medical shops like you just said, sir. In India, stigma is attached to female-centric issues, what would you suggest to such men?
First of all, while I am talking this like this in officials, I told, um. Don't think what we are doing menstrual hygiene awareness, uh, don't segregate only for women. It is for the entire population of India, they laughed, Murga, what you are talking, what I use, you are just to educating men also. We can, we can, I said, it is for the Indian population. So while we are playing Padman, we cannot say only women sit, men go, boys go. So in school, while we are talking, we, we, we cannot say boys will go, so what is the purpose, I said. If men also know about women personalizing, the struggle even about delivery. Then seeing the girl, you know, every man or the boy, the way they are seeing the girl. It will change, earlier the boy saw the girl like something, now the same boy or the man will see the women. With dignity and respect, that is why we need menstrual hygiene awareness campaign to the men too. Is not immediately going, uh, giving a man the knowledge and calling a street girl and talking each other, it is impossible. But automatically, if you teach about women, what they are facing, what they are doing, how they are sacrificing, how they are managing. Automatically the respect built in with men mind, boys mind. Then while a woman standing in electric train, in subway train, immediately they will, boy will stand, they will say sit. So this was the dignity and the respect will given by the boys and men automatically, if they understand women personalizing. And delivery, everything.
Very true, sir, so what type of ecosystem do you feel the government should provide to boost the social entrepreneurship in India?
So it's a big joint family, so we cannot expect everything from the federal government of India. So it's a big joint family, so we cannot expect everything from the federal government of India. So that's what I'm saying. There are two category of people. One category, they will try to clean everything. Then they will, they want to do, start new on the clean place. It is impossible like Indian continent. Like that, everything will be there. You started good thing from one corner, you will do some other. When all age college students started doing good, all university students started good, then everybody started doing good. That change will happen. So that's the difference between the regular pattern of thinking, cleaning everything, you know, taking corruption away from everything. So even cleaning the home completely is impossible. Clean the room where you are living, clean the table where you are eating, slowly corner, corner, corner everybody. Then the whole home will be cleaned. So my advice is, start doing good by every individual of the respective citizen of the country. Then whole country become good.
Prishika Anijah is a student here, sir, who would like to put her question across to you. Prishika?
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk in front of the global inspiration. Sir, as you said that it was a taboo talking about the menstrual hygiene of the women. Earlier, in earlier times and it is still a taboo to talk about sanitary pads or menstrual hygiene. When you are at this point of time, start talking to the audience or, uh. Start talking in the institutions or in the webinar. What do you think is restricting people still to talk about the menstrual hygiene of women? Thank you.
First of all, you know, they don't know what they can talk, because everything they heard is the wrong one. Because they hear the taboos, the girl in period should not walk in the home, she should not enter in that pooja room. If she, if she touches the pickles, it become parish. So like that, everything is wrongly feed, wrongly memories. Wrongly conceived. So with that, what people understand? So we started dialogue, then we have to give the new area, we have to take out the pen drive in their mind. We have to put the new, then they will start talking dialogue. Now we have to clean like that, you know, we have to feed the real information. The menstrual hygiene blood is not, uh, what you talk like, it is not filled of virus, nothing. You will spill like that, you know, everything from science to taboo, everything you have to show practically. We, we showed because even a big company spent thirty crores, touch the pickle, they will come out a project. Uh, your, your advertisement campaign like that. So like that, even while working. A biggest taboo in a tribal village, there is a belief, if the particular community women are using, our girl are using the pad. The goddess of their community will take the vision of the girl. Then how they will talk, how they will use. Then we will set up the machine in the tribal area, the women started using, then other women go to other women, they show the highs. I used the napkin for last two months, nothing happened to my eye. This way we are giving change even to women. Then how to the common man like that. So we have to feed the real, you know, message, then we can convert. Now the real message is zero, yeah.
Sir, Jaishri Industries is recognized not only in India, but in countries like Nigeria. Ethiopia, Kenya, Uganda, Nepal and Bangladesh. How did this come about? Do you have any expansion plan in any other part of the world?
The moment you say expands and you know, there is only way being a, a big corporate. So the month I become a big corporate, the cost which I'm doing, it becomes change. So now say I'm selling some Bharatas, a stuffed Bharata, making at my home, I'm selling at the cost. Suddenly I become a multi-floor star hotel, I'm saying the same quality of Bharata will give on a same price, it is impossible. So like that, I want to spread this social auto- entrepreneurship activity, same style across globe. I'm little bit greed. I'm trying to create a company with completely women, not a corporate, but it will play more than a corporate like a cooperative model of doing things like how the Amal is doing. You know, it is, it is a corporate, but it's not a typical type of corporate. But I'm trying to big a corporate, even the stakeholders are the women of the respective country. So I'm little bit greed, but I will succeed. So then only it will give the real, uh, benefit to the society. If I become a company, then I have to pay, you know, uh, CTC. One crore to a manager, another CTC, so whole become base. Instead of, I want to make this as a company owned by women of the world. That's what I'm trying to create a new form of company. Maybe it's become a global model, first company, which I'm trying.
Wow, a company owned by the women.
Yes, completely want to be women, yeah. From machine manufacturing to pad everything.
So your focus has been women empowerment and you've offered employment to many women. What according to you are the various ways and means for women empowerment in India?
I thank our experience minister Harun Jayakli. He is the person, um, really. I jokingly, I met in a party, then while the coffee time, I said, sir, you provide sanitary pad to each and every school girl. We can see the change in Indian GDP. He loved, what now, it's a concern between a sanitary pad and Indian GDP. I said, we are, in India, we men only trying to work, we are trying to change India, we want to become a superpower, douper power. But we kept all women, you know, sisters, mothers, everybody in, you know, cattle field and in kitchens. How, how India going to be a superpower? Because now only started going from two thousand twelve, only I'm going to, uh, away from India. First I went to London, then I started traveling across world. The very first time I landed in London or in New York or in Tokyo, I found the difference. The, between a developed nation and developing nation. It is not the ten-lane police road or hundred and ten-floor skyscraper or the bullet train, nothing. What are the country, which are the country, the women are empowered. Very well, you can call the country as a developed nations. Which are the country, the women not empowered, you can call them as underdeveloped country or developing country. So to develop the women, what is need, again, you know, not giving one hundred rupees per day, a scheme. Uh, two thousand rupees for delivery, not like that. We need to give a proper education to every girl child. Then even today, there are girls are going to school, but they are not going to school, they are taking six days a month leave. Because of the stupid nonavailability of the pads, to address the menstruation problem, they are not going to school. Even there is an examination, they are skipping examination, they are never passed in the class. They are not even coming of the school level. Then how they are going to get a skill training, they are going to come into Indian workforce. But provide sanitary double to each and every schoolgirls. Then they will finish the school, at least school level, then they will take at least a small skill training. They will join in the Indian work, workforce. This way you can see the Indian GDP change. Then I said, why we are, we should wait to empower the women, why not empower the girl, apprehend she become a woman? That is my policy.
So India is the youngest nation of the world, which needs a new vision and thinking. What advice would you like to offer to our young generation, a segment of which is also listening to you here today?
Uh, again, I'm repeating. Don't try to use your education to make your life as a cakewalk, only to survive. It is a foolishness happening. That is why a simple virus make to lock inside the home for months. The whole life is collapsed, nobody working freely. Luckily, I speaking alone, I never wear the mask. You just think, not even a single creator is not, are hatched by the intuition across the world. They hatch, why? Because everybody know only to survive. In different ways, having an Audi, having a, you know, a Jaguar, that's all, not more than. All the, you know, breakthrough innovation hope happens only in eighteenth, seventeenth and early nineteenth century. The whole twentieth century is criminally wasted, not even a single innovation come, a breakthrough innovation like, you know, electricity, a steam engine. You know, any airplane, more than the weight of an air, it can fly like that, a breakthrough innovation, nothing happen. Why? Because everybody is having a fear on the future. Everybody want to use the education to make their life into cakewalk. Please don't do that. Very mainly, don't look opportunity in your life, it is out of date model. Don't look opportunity, then you become, the moment you look for opportunity, you are, you are dead. Instead of that, you are really a brave man or woman, look for a problem. Murga found a problem. Women not using sanitary pad in India or world is a problem. I took. I address with my little knowledge, I become a solution provider, I build around a business model around it. Now I am solving it like that. Every younger generation from India, they tried to found a problem in their local areas. You know, in India or any country, they tried to become a solution provider. So this way you can also thrive. With full of your heart, with a meaning to your life, then you can change the world too. Please note, I am not calling you to become a mother Teresa, I'm not talking here to serving the society or philanthropy. I'm here asking to become a solution provider, for-profit model as a social entrepreneur. Or I can tell, like a butterfly, I'm a butterfly, I'm drinking honey from the flower, but the flower is not dying. I'm helping the pollination of the flower. So like that, you can be a creative butterfly, like a social entrepreneur. You can help the pollination of the whole country to thrive up. So become a solution provider, found a problem and win in your life. That is my advice.
So after listening to you, I'm reminded of this line for the students, which can be a lesson for everybody here. Stop chasing the money and start chasing your passion. You keep saying, rather you have been saying for the past one hour, sir, that you're not a film actor. At some point or the other in your talk, but you are definitely a hero, sir. You're inspirational and you're a true hero, sir. Mr. Arunachalum, we are grateful for your presence here today. And as a token of our appreciation, on behalf of the Asian Education Group, we would like to present a memento to you. This shall reach you very soon, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. This is the first moment I am getting online, so I can tell to the other people also.
Thank you very much, sir, for being here once again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you everyone.